At this point, I'll call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Hudson Common Council to order for Monday, February 21st, 2014. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Berchel.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Yakub.
Here.
District Three, McCormick.
Here.
District Four, Weber.
Here.
District Five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District Six, Banslow is excused.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Now is your time. One more time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council? Okay. I just had the agenda uploaded, so we're ready to go now. Madam Clerk, consent agenda.
To approve the regular common council meeting minutes of April 7th, 2014, and the organizational meeting minutes of April 15th, 2014. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $731,159.13. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of sixteen regular operators licenses for the period April 22nd, 2014, to June 30th, 2015. And to approve the issuance of two regular operators licenses for the period July 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2016. And to approve the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used April 26th, 2014, at the Pottery for Prevention Event at the Fifth Center for the Arts. Additional operator license information is available in the Clerk's office on request, and issuance is contingent upon payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. To place on file the financial report for March 2014, the Public Utility Commission minutes of April 8th, 2014, and the quarterly reports from the Building Inspector and the Fire Department. To approve the Yellowstone Trail Heritage Days on June 7th through 8th, 2014, and the St. Croix River Days on July 12th through 17th, 2014, as community events. To approve the temporary Class B wine and Class B beer licenses for Turning Point for the Pottery for Prevention Event on April 25th through 26th, 2014. To approve the bowling alley license for the Hudson Bowling Center for sixteen alleys for the licensed period July 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2015. To approve changing the time on the no parking signs on Fifth Street next to Trinity Academy to no parking from 12:45 PM to 3:45 PM. To approve the Willow River Schools Willow Walks Event on June 12th, 2014, at 9:00 AM, as presented. To approve installing three-direction arrow signs to direct traffic through the curve on the corner of Vine Street and 12th Street. To approve the Stipe Shows Incorporated to hold a carnival at the Plaza 94 parking lot contingent on written receipt from the property owner and obtaining a direct seller's permit. To approve barricading Locust Street between Second Street and Third Street on the third Sunday in May, July, August, and September 2014, and June 22nd, 2014, for the Locust Street Car Show contingent upon any -- contingent on approval from the city attorney regarding any liability issues. And that is all.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Yakub.
Yes.
McCormick.
Approve.
Hoggatt.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion possible action for a conditional use permit by Presbyterian Homes Housing and Assisted Living for a senior community-based residential located south of Stage Line Road and east of the Hudson Hospital, Clinics and Health Partners Medical Office Building. Mr. Darnold.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Plan Commission recommends approval of the conditional use permit for Presbyterian Homes for a 65-unit community-based residential facility. Forty-six units will be used for assisted living and nineteen units for memory care in a residential care apartment complex, ninety-five units with 132 beds. The conditions of approval recommended by the Plan Commission are that the issuance and maintenance of the Department of Health Services licenses for both the residential care facility and the residential care apartment complex and the community-based residential facility be obtained and maintained, and that copy be provided to the Community Development Office for filing. And approval of the final development plans for proposed community-based residential facility and the residential care apartment complex and a 6,000-square-foot medical office. Looks like the Plan Commission will be reviewing those final development plans either in late April or, or, excuse me, possibly in mid-May. Are there any questions? Are representatives of Presbyterian Homes here tonight if you want to ask any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I was wondering about how well that's going to work to share the driveway with the hospital, with the roundabout.
Well, your car counts really aren't as substantial as what you think. Based on ITE, engineering, generations for traffic, 200-bed facility, basically on a daily basis, those average about 2.6 trips per bed, or 532. Forty employees, typically the employees generate about 3.93 trips per day, and ends up being 689 trips per day. Spread that over a 12-hour, that's about one car per minute. It's pretty light traffic.
Yeah, okay. I mean, the only chance for Bonn like is turning left and to go over to the new facility right after the roundabout, but can always change it, I suppose.
Any other questions or comments? We have representatives here if you have, if anyone would like to see anything, or other than if you want the full color deal, we can have the, Mr. Howard can give us a presentation if you'd like to see it.
It's entirely up to them. I'd like to follow up on that comment about the roundabout, that so much traffic turns in there that it would seem like a designated right-turn lane would have been useful there. I don't know if we can do that now with the design, but half the traffic that goes through that roundabout turns, more or less, and it would make it, make it go much more smoothly for the people going through, and they do move through there.
We've talked about that, haven't we?
Plan Commission, we were discussing it, yes.
Yep, same thing.
Well, there are two, if I may speak.
Yes.
I think there's two suggestions that we need to look at in regards to modifications of that roundabout. One is that there's two lanes approaching that roundabout, of which there's signage that the lane narrows down to one. That right lane should be painted so that it's very clear that you have to get over in the left lane as you approach. I think there's some confusion from that. Again, those lanes need to be painted and that could be put on the schedule. Also, some of the roundabout signage that is provided actually shows the actual, you know, there's a roundabout, but then there might be a bar that goes to the right or south. That type of signage might also clarify, or we can put something. But I certainly think that there are relatively inexpensive modifications to help that traffic pattern.
That'll all still be discussed at Plan Commission before.
Well, I think Plan Commission said that they really want to separate the two issues.
Right.
Yep. Any other comments, questions?
You just motion to approve it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is discussion possible action of development plans for 360-foot, square-foot addition modification to off-street parking and add nine parking stalls at 2323 Crestview Drive, Taco Bell Border Foods, Inc.
Yeah, in late 2012, there's discussions about development of the former tourism center. At that time, there were some discussions about property trades between the existing Taco Bell site and the Hudson Center proposal. Those have been basically approved and are moving ahead. The proposal for the development plans for the Taco Bell site is that they enlarge a building by 360 square feet on the north. They'll be rearranging their existing parking in the drive-through, which will clean up the traffic patterns inside. There'd be a second access provided off Badger Drive to the north. Originally, when we talked about Gateway Boulevard and trying to clean up some of the traffic patterns there, we talked about a median being installed in Gateway Boulevard. This particular plan will accommodate that, which will allow full access off of Badger Drive, the right-in, right-out only on the existing driveway access as it is now if that median would be installed. So, they are looking ahead at that possibility. Plan Commission recommends the proposed development plans for the Taco Bell site at 2323 Crestview Drive, with the plans to be amended for the city engineer's review dated April 8th. Those basic plan changes are talking about specifications as it refers to city specifications, and then there's a storm drainage modification that is now being agreed upon between the owners of the property and Hudson Center, so that issue's been resolved. We just need to get the plans changed before the building permits issued.
Questions for Mr. Darnold?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Discussion.
I just want to say one thing quickly. I know the representatives here from Taco Bell, and I, as a member of Plan Commission and as someone who, that area was part of my district before the, before it got re, before the census, I want to thank you for taking into consideration changing the entrances and trying to help us as a city make that area more, flow more easily. I think that's been a good neighbor, and I really appreciate it, so.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fifth, 5C is discussion possible action on wireless communication antenna and ancillary equipment on 509 Second Street, Verizon Wireless.
509 Second Street is the second building on the northwest quadrant of Second Street and Walnut, so basically one block west of City Hall and up one building. The proposal by Verizon Wireless is to install four antenna on the east side of the building, at which those antenna will be screened with a material that looks like brick, so it'll help complement or look similar to the existing building. The antenna, the two antenna on the west side will be painted the same color as the brick, so it'll help camouflage those. Not that they're going to disappear, but, you know, they'd be less noticeable, similar to what we do with water towers, painting them blue to help them to blend into the natural environment. State legislature changed, review the way cities and municipalities can review wireless communication facilities in 2013. Basically, cities cannot stop these types of reviews as long as the antenna that are being placed on an existing building or existing support structure does not change the height by more than 20 feet, or if the, any basic tower structures are less than 200 feet. Again, a nice thing about this particular proposal is that the equipment building, ancillary equipment building will be placed inside the building, and the wires that go from there to the antenna will be taken through the building, so they're not on the side of the building, they're not exposing. So, I think they've proposed a very nice job in least concealing the antenna as best possible, and the area issue is, is almost everybody has a cellphone. Pretty hard not to try to accommodate these types of facilities in areas where reception may not be as good. Plan Commission recommends approval of the development plans as proposed by Verizon Wireless for the six antenna and the ancillary equipment, 509 Second Street.
Anybody have any questions on this?
No, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Just regress a second. The antenna on the east side of the building next to Second Street will be about seven and a half feet higher than the existing wall, parapet wall, but again, it'll be screened on three sides. The antenna on the west side will go above this current roof about eight feet, so it's not, it's not likely to have a significant height above the roof line.
Okay. Any other, or any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance Committee, discussion and possible action on purchase of controller boxes for Second, Second Street, Second and Walnut, and Second and Vine. We, we, these, we went out and received bids. Tom is here if we have questions. It was recommended from Finance to go ahead and purchase this. It's a cost of $16,000, and Tom has assured us it'll be less than $9,000 because we've allocated $25,000 for this particular project. Questions or comments? Mr. Zulley, do you want to come up if, if anybody has? We've got two more items for you, or three.
Move for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Zulley? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is possible discussion for purchase of trash containers on Dyke Road. This is to purchase five containers for $3,048. We have $19,883 in our park dedication funds, and Finance has recommended approval for this. Questions or comments?
Are we planning to have recycling as part of that, or this is just straight trash removal at this point?
These were not designated as recycling containers, although that, these were just trash containers. We certainly could try to incorporate the recycling containers in other locations.
I mean, clearly, a lot of stuff gets thrown away that shouldn't, that could easily get recycled out there, and people would use it, I'm sure, because they were kind of used to it now, so.
So, what does it cost more to do recycling containers, or would it be similar costs?
Generally, they're just different colors, or they have, you know, have a different hood that says, you know, "Blue Recycling" or something to that effect.
So, maybe could we put, like, two recycling and three garbage, possibly, if we approve five cans, make two of them recycling, and three of them garbage?
Good idea.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6C, discussion possible action on 2014 Grand View Park concessions agreement, I think was delayed, are we?
We, we made a motion to contingent upon seeing last year's finance receipts or tax return.
Okay. Yeah, it was not delayed, I'm sorry. I was thinking of something else.
So, this was part of the five-year plan, is that correct?
The concessions agreement?
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about the next item.
You're jumping ahead.
I'm jumping ahead.
No, basically that we, may I? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Basically, in the contract, they need to show us receipts, and we haven't seen any, so before we approve the next contract, we want to see the receipts from last year or tax return, or something that shows that, what their actual income or was.
Gross receipts.
Gross receipts, thank you, was.
Randy?
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll make that motion, do we have to read?
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Everybody.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, number six. Discussion possible action on purchase of shade structure for Williams Park.
This was postponed.
This was postponed.
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 So, we'll bring it back.
Okay. So, we don't even get to talk about it. Dang it.
Okay, let's move on to the next item, item 10, which is the initial draft of engineering, RFP for our engineering services.
I presented a copy for everyone. Basically, I just wanted everybody to get a chance to see it and to start getting feedback. Danny and I, Danny's provided feedback, Catherine has, Tom and I have talked about it. We just wanted to make sure you had a chance in the early stages if there's things that you want to see in it, so no real action tonight, just so that it's been presented to you, and if you have comments, you can either make them now, or you can email them to us. It's going to be a little bit before we get it out.
RFP, RFQ, what's the difference?
Originally, I don't know, Catherine, is there really a difference?
Well, request for proposal, they're proposing to provide XYZ services at X amount. Qualifications just describes.
Originally, what I had had, but then Neil thought it maybe should be an RFQ for qualifications. It doesn't matter to me, I.
I think it's semantics, they're going to tell, you're asking for their qualifications, but you also want a proposal from them.
So, it'll be an RFP.
Okay.
But otherwise, just get any comments, you know, in the next couple of weeks to, to me, and then we'll incorporate those in with what Danny and I and Tom and Catherine are working on, unless there's something you have questions on tonight, but.
Okay.
And the items that are highlighted in pink are things that at some point will need a decision on from the council as far as, you know, certain questions that you will need to make policy decisions on, so if you want to kind of look at those in, in your review, that's it.
So, the last page, Devin.
Yep.
You have that highlighted, and I guess it's pink.
Right.
Will the engineering be involved in the review inspection of developer-funded projects?
Right now, and this is something that Neil brought up.
Yep.
If, because I think FOTH works with some of the developers that are developing in the city, and then as they do their inspections, we then rebuild them out, correct, Neil?
Yes.
Whether we want to continue to do that.
I can't imagine.
Are they done more so for private?
They're done for private, you know, a lot of the red seat are came in, any, most of the elements.
Could I just, why wouldn't we? I guess is, is a question that I would.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing.
Danny, do you want to address that? That was the question that I had.
Well, at this point, I mean, my own personal emphasis has been tried to, between what's being proposed, between the part-time city engineer.
Yep.
And what's being proposed between a consulting engineer to give city staff as much latitude as that part-time engineer evolves, gives us discretion to, to direct projects to the best resource we think can handle the job. Now, sometimes that may be discussing a project with the, Tom Sifko, our engineer. Tom, do you feel comfortable? Do you have the capabilities of handling this size of project? Now, as far as, as far as inspections, the same discretion would be used, the size of the project, type of inspection that may be required, we may sometimes forward that to Mr. Sifko, other times we may forward it to the consulting engineer. I see a period of approximately six months upon which is part-time engineer, or employment going to change. We're going to be able to evaluate it over a period of time. We know we're going to be able to streamline it, but I want to try to get as much flexibility of getting those projects in the best hands we possibly can. Now, the objective is with Mr. Sifko that with less overhead costs, the costs to the city or to developers going to be less, but that may not always coincide with the capabilities of, of his particular experience.
I, I don't think this says that, it says, will the engineering firm be involved in the review, be billed, and I, I think we want to do that.
Neil, do you want to, you're the one that.
Am I misunderstanding this? I probably am. But I, whether it's, whether it's Tom or them, we would expect that we would bill that, wouldn't we, or wouldn't we build?
Yeah, the question is, will bill as many project costs as we possibly can? That's been the policy forever.
Yep.
And my, my point in adding it there is that it was not included within, you know, within the scope of services to be provided. You know, if you read the other, you know, project management slash construction services, that, you know, that was not in there.
Okay.
And I didn't know whether that was intentional or not, and so if it is, if it's the intention, you know, some language similar to that should be added, at least that's what's my recommendation.
This wasn't, this wasn't your question?
That was not in there at all, which is why I offered that comment. I wasn't sure whether it was intentionally not in there, or.
Well, I think we should have it in there.
It was not in there the last time.
Okay.
Yeah, with the language, like, just as needed, right? Because it wouldn't be all the time.
No.
When necessary or appropriate.
And that would be up to the city staff to determine.
And I, I think that's, that's exactly what we were, been talking about with that, Danny, so.
Cool.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions, now that I have asked confusing questions?
Apparently, there's a word missing, engineering firm or engineer, I'm not sure how to read that.
Where is that?
At the, in that pink comment that we were just discussing. Will the engineering?
Oh, yeah. The engineering.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Good catch. Okay, anything else on that? All right, let's move on to 10B. We've got a lot of items, well, we're moving, we're getting near the end. I think everyone last organizational meeting received a copy of the, the downtown parking study, and one of the things that this council, I think, is probably something that we need to, to get moving and, and decide what we want to do with our downtown parking, whether or not we do anything. But I think it's one of the, it behooves us to sit down and review this, this parking consultant's report that he gave to us, and I, I thought I would, I would request, how you want to go about this, whether we have a separate committee, we work as a whole, we work on it as a whole council, or we go to a, you will call it a parking committee for a period of time to, to make recommendations back to the council. It's entirely up to you folks however you'd like to run it or do it.
I think if we put it back in committee, it just takes longer. I mean, I don't know if we have enough time allotted for all of us to make those decisions, but if the alternative, if you're asking to go to a different committee, I would say let Mary and her people that she's been working with follow this through.
Okay. All right. I was thinking of, again, okay, that's a good suggestion.
And my point is not to, I don't want to slow this down, we need to, like you said, action or not.
Well, we make, yeah, you know, we've, it's a fairly, and there's other alternatives that, that, that we're looking at, and I think we've had, I've had a couple different people bring me some new ideas that we hadn't looked at before, and something that we should, we need to address the issue, and, and I don't want to say put it to bed, but this goes, this has been going on for at least 25 years.
Yeah, and we have a serious parking shortage, I mean, at a certain time of the day.
But I think we've progressed more in the last few years than we have in the 25 years.
Well, right, and there's more demand for parking, too, so, I mean.
So, I, you know, the, the only, not to say that I disagree with that, Randy, but I think, who was on your committee? Mary, did you, did you use it through, was it the?
Well, we had the parking, we did it with, we had the parking, downtown parking committee down with Chamber, and then the parking study was essentially you and myself and Tom and Marty.
Yep.
And with the state, I mean, not with the state, that's the other committee, with, with the Walker Consultants.
Walker Consultants.
But I think a lot of it derived from the downtown parking.
Correct, and Danny had a lot of good input into that.
Yeah.
So, how about, how about this? I'll, I'll suggest this. How about we have the chairman of the Safety and Public Works and maybe John?
Sure, I'd be interested.
Because, and then Danny and, and maybe myself, kind of do that, unless you want to try and do it as the council. That leaves the two new guys out. That's not very good, is it?
That's all right, that's all right.
That wasn't, that wasn't the intent, but John, it's John's.
District.
District.
Yeah.
And.
I think maybe Tom, Mr. Tom Zulley, too, since.
Yeah, well, I, you know, as, as, I would guess that council people would be the voting members, and everybody else will be, you know, staff, staff assistants.
Just make sure that you know, let me know when the meeting's going to be, just so I can notice.
Notice it, yeah.
Then Greendale noticed.
But we, let's get a consensus whether that seems okay or not.
That's fine. What's the timeline?
Oh, man. I think we want to try and move as quickly as we can to make a, to make a recommendation, and I think, I think the, is more than just the parking ramp, I think it's, we've got some other issues.
How's it going to get paid for?
How do we pay for it? I mean, this is a, that alone could be a finance nightmare trying to figure, it's not a nightmare, who's going to pay for it?
If we get ahead of budget cycle and, you know, have a recommendation by August kind of thing, then we're, we're ready, we could plan for 2015, at least have something to look forward to.
There's always an option of referendum, too.
That's true.
It's not, it's not your favorite, but it's an option.
Well, no, but, you know, the issue that we've, we've talked about, and since it's on the agenda, we can talk about whether or not, as a percentage-wise, that the downtown folks pay for a certain percentage of it through taxes, or we charge, and then the rest of the city pay for the difference. of it through taxes, or we charge, and then the rest of the city pay for the difference. I mean, there's, there's, you can have arguments on both sides of the issue, on who should pay for it, who's benefiting, and should the folks up on the hill pay for parking for downtown?
The business people usually.
The business, well, sure.
Because they already have to provide-
Or taxpayers, the ones that, that live on the, and again, 4.2 million, we haven't bitten a 4-2, $4.2 million or higher. And if you look at one of the, one of the studies calls for, and I'm not advocating this position, but you can read it, that the parking, the fire station would be moved. So if you want to say we've got to relocate a parking-
Public safety.
Public safety building, now we're talking about maybe another four and a half to five million dollars. So now we're up to a $10 million, nine and a half million dollar project. Lot of stuff to consider. And then, do we, do we leave something downtown? I think, Tom, we talked about the old city garage over there, whether we could leave some of our equipment downtown, so we don't leave this area, and I don't want to use the word unprotected because it's not, it would be protected, but, so.
Which is why I think it's just a in committee, because I think otherwise, we should come back to council with like three options or something. But the timeline is good.
Yeah, I think, I think that is, does everybody think that's kind of, is it doable? That we could get something, we're going to have to really, and then, of course, I think we want to have the downtown folks involved at some point too. We need to get input from those folks.
And you probably, if we're, if, looking at the referendum, if you're looking at November, early August, you're going to want to have, because there's a, what's even longer than that now? It's nine weeks now instead of seven or 10?
I don't recall.
I'll check on that, Mary, and let you know what-
Would be for November rec-
Right, but there's, there's a longer, it used to be six weeks and I think it's-
It's August, isn't it?
I think it's 10 weeks now, it used to be six weeks that you have to, so I'll check on that date so you know what that date is.
Probably August, yeah.
Okay.
So, best, best case scenario, maybe next year. Well, no, I, I mean, when you start, at least-
Yeah, August is-
We have to budget for it, so if, I mean, if it's not next year, it'll be 2016, but we have to try to get ahead of it now for-
Exactly. Well, what we want to do-
Why don't we make it a goal to bring it to the July 7th?
Yeah, I would agree.
It's, it's not even May yet.
Yeah, it's still April.
We can do it. I'm aggressively.
Well, there's more than just this parking study, and then we, Karen, we can get Mr. Scott out here, can't we? Scott can come out and give us a-
There's one more meeting and it's not ready.
I mean, if we can't get it ready by then, we can at least come back with what we have.
So would you, would you prefer that he comes and talk, I think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have this on next council agenda and have him come and speak to the entire council about the report? Would that be okay?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Can I say something?
Sure.
It seems to me that at the end of the day, we're going to have to address the fire hall issue when we're talking about these, so are you going to include that analysis as part of your deal?
Sure.
Absolutely.
All right.
You know, and if we come out and say, we really don't think we need a, a parking ramp, which could happen, I still think we should talk about whether or not we should centralize or put another fire station or an additional fire station. I mean, that's a whole nother issue, but I think it's something we can talk about.
Add a whole nother can of worms to that, that maybe the public work should have, it should be one facility, a facility to service both.
Oh, boy.
I know. I got cans of worms inside.
Well, again, we're talking about budget items for next year and, and we're also trying to do some street stuff, so we've got a lot of stuff on the agenda.
Just to interject on, on the parking, if it doesn't do a ramp, then maybe we, that committee should also explore the opportunity of buying up real estate.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Well, we have, basically, it's, it's going to be the same thing that we, I mean, this is just one entity of the parking situation. I think it's come down to, we need to decide where we're going to go, whether it's buying real estate, whether it's building the ramp, we have already identified where we can possibly add additional stalls already downtown, that's, you know, so I think that's, as a whole, that's what's going, that's what I want to try and bring back to the council to address, is three options, A, B, and C, involving all of that, including the firehouse, everything, so. That would be my goal at least.
Yep. And, and John, I can tell you that I visited with some folks today that don't think we have a parking issue in town, and that they've never had a problem finding a place to park, and, and there, there's going to be that group of folks that, that are-
Well, we have two parking times of the day, we have daytime parking, then we have nights and weekends, and they're radically different, I mean, as we can attest, you know, that, that's when the overflow starts to happen, and with potential restaurant expansion and things like that, it's all part of the equation. It's a numbers, it's a numbers problem, you know?
I think, I think the issue is, what's your definition of a fair amount of distance to walk? Is it, is it a half a block, is it two blocks, is it three blocks? And I think that's where, if you think you're going to have to be within a half a block, yep, there's probably not enough room for everybody.
Well, it depends on if it's summer or winter.
That is true.
In winter, half a block.
Or raining or not.
All right, so if it's okay, then we'll, we'll establish that committee with the four of us, and then we'll get Danny and, and Tom and Marty.
And you want Scott at the next meeting?
Pardon?
You want Scott at the next meeting?
Yes. Karen, can you see that? Yeah, so we'll, we'll bring it into the next, we'll bring this along again for next time to go through it. Anything else on that? Thank you for your help on that, it's, we, we've had this done since February, and we've kind of, with the new, new council folks coming on, I thought we'd wait until we get everybody so we don't have to go through it again. All right. Item 10C, discuss and possible action on traffic study issue at 400 block of Corn Street. Is that?
This was sent back to committee and it's coming back to you. Went back to public safety from the council, now it's coming back to council.
Yeah, we simplified this greatly by, we're going to replicate the, the recommendation is to replicate the signage on the alley out here that where it meets Locust.
Yes, so pedestrian crossing caution, car, all that, car crossing caution.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We're putting up a sign, right?
There's a sign.
Two little signs.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, discussion, possible action on resolution 4-14, resolution releasing public drainage and utility easements, lots for Red Cedar Canyon, North Cove, Hanshagen's Home. Mr. Donald?
In December of 2013, the common council approved releasing these easements and directed the city attorney to prepare documents, formalizing that. Catherine has, has been very busy last several months, but now her, her, she has prepared the resolution 4-14, which formalizes the previous action by the common council. So basically, this is a housekeeping item, but we're recommending approval of resolution 414.
Move to suspend the rules.
Yeah.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Roll call.
Haggott?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
McCormick?
Aye.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended, is there a motion to approve?
So move to approve resolution 4-14.
Second.
Is there any questions? Does anybody have any question for Danny on it? Okay, all in favor?
Wait a second.
Okay, yep.
Is this, is this the forestry one?
No.
That's okay.
This is the, this is the resolution for public drainage and utility.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
Just wanted if anybody has questions. Okay, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Discussion possible on ordinance 2-14, urban forest ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, we've brought the vice chair, Ken Holman, to do some preamble on this, just to kind of give people, kind of go over the intent of the ordinance and why we feel it's important for our urban forests, so.
Just a point of information, did we have first reading on this?
No, I don't think so, I think it went back to committee.
Yeah, yeah, we've done, and Catherine will have some comments too here, as we get into-
There's no answer.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Council, my name is Ken Holman, live at 1020 Fillmore Street, and am the vice chair of the Urban Forest Council Committee. And the intent of this work on the ordinance is to update it in preparation for dealing with issues of, that are presented to the city and its residents by this new pest called Emerald Ashbore. This ordinance was first, was last updated or last created when Dutch elm disease was prevalent in the 70s. So, we've taken a close look, and the Urban Forest Committee has been, gone over this over the course of two or three meetings, and we wanted to specifically address the storage of, of wood and any recommend, and make recommendations for avoiding the transmission of oak wilt, which is, continues to be a problem, and, and that is exacerbated by pruning during the growing season. So, along with the storage, trying to recommend that the storage people understand the dangers of transmitting both past the Emerald Ashbore and these other diseases that have been with us, and also the practice of pruning, not pruning during the growing season is really the intent of the changes to the urban forest ordinance.
I think also, one of our main concerns now that with Emerald Ashbore being so close, I mean, what are we now, 12 miles or something within?
15 miles.
Our urban forest, just what we've inventoried, has 25% asteries. Asteries are cheap and very popular with developers and still, they grow fast, they're pretty hardy, and, but the problem is, once this pest comes into our community, it's very hard to, not handle the problem, but it becomes a nuisance for removal and utilization of the wood. So, some communities have spent tens of thousands of dollars trying to manage that. We're ahead of the game here, and this ordinance helps with some of that as well, just in recommendations of new planting kinds of trees that we recommend that you would put in, and this is, primarily in public space. Obviously, people in their own yards can plant whatever they want, but we're trying to provide a set of guidelines that would help you make a good choice for trees. So we've, we've kind of softened the language since our last go around to say, more like, you should do this, it's not a, it's not a you have to do it, but just to give people, and I think, if you want to jump in here-
Sure. I just had a couple of comments. If you look at the 229-13.
Yep.
E and F, at the last council meeting, people were concerned about the prohibiting, the prohibitions on storing diseased wood, and I think that's where the committee decided, instead of making it a, like a violation, they're trying to recommend contacting the city forester and being told what the proper way to store it is.
We're, we're developing some guidelines, so if you happen to have wood that has elm disease or ashbore, there's ways to prevent the things from moving around.
So, my comment was that E and F really don't belong in that section. If you look on the next page, it's 229-14, E and F are this, addressing the same issue of storage and trimming, which the council was concerned about last time. So I would just say move that new language that the committee is recommending into ENF on page four, 229-14, because the previous council didn't like the just flat-out prohibition, wanted it more-
You said replace E with, replace E on page four and F? Take E and F out?
Yeah, get rid of E and F as shown on page four, put the underlined language on page three, ENF, where it really should go, and I think the committee intended it to go.
Right.
We did, we kind of got mixed up in the numbers, sorry about that.
Basically, you're getting rid of it from page three, putting, getting rid of page four, and replacing the red over to page four.
Correct.
Got it.
So that the same applies to both public and private tree?
Well, certainly the city won't be trimming their trees.
Right, right.
I mean, they'll follow their own guidelines, so. And then I had a, just a couple of other comments to make it clear that the city, for example, in public nuisance tree, 229-11I. In the last line, I think it needs to be clear that it's, one of the things that makes it a public nuisance tree is a tree that poses a threat to public safety. We're not talking about trees that maybe are not being maintained properly on private property and may pose a threat to, you know, fall on a house or something like that. That's not the city's concern, so I'd like public put in there and, or I recommend that, and then similarly on page four, paragraph C, instead of a hazard to life or property, I would insert public safety again, so that it's clear, what the city's trying to protect is public safety in terms of caring for trees. And then, same comment, 229-18. Right after hazard, if you see in line four, hazard to public safety. So those were my comments on the ordinance.
Tom?
Well, you know, I'm coming late to this, but it's my understanding that the idea of this ordinance primarily is to educate people about the effects of diseased wood, forest wood?
It's, it's, it tries to be as comprehensive in dealing with all the issues that come up in the city's attempt to manage, proactively manage the tree resource. And so, while we don't want to be too heavy-handed and we backed off on the shall and replace it with should, we still feel that it's important that the city retains some control about, on what's, trees go into the city right of way, because they become the city's liability and responsibility.
But this E and F talk about what the city can do on somebody's private land. Do they not?
Yes.
And that's my concern, is why is the city getting involved with somebody's private land?
Well, if you look at the way DNR would come in, and if we end up with an emerald ashbore, they'll quarantine our whole county, and then we'll be responsible for maintaining wood that is diseased, because we don't want it to continue to spread. It, it kind of ends up out of our jurisdiction, so we're not, we're not saying you can't store wood in your backyard, we're just saying, hey, if you're going to do it, you should understand there's guidelines, especially if you have diseased wood. And same with the oak wilt thing, it's, it's like, it's, some cities just flat out say, you can't do it.
Why don't we think about having some language that says that the city recommends, instead of being so heavy-handed with private property owners' rights? And in other words, E, the, the city recommends that no person, firm, store within the city any bark-bearing disease, instead of no person, you know, instead of no, instead of should, it should be, the city recommends that nobody.
I think that's fair.
I don't have a problem with that at all. Well, in fact, that was our original language, we weren't sure if we would use that or, or should, so.
I think that's fair.
I totally, I'm fine with that. Yeah.
I think it's appropriate as well.
But if you go to violations now, let's just, if I could just add, it says violations, and that's on page four, 229-16, any person, firm, or firm or corporation violating the provisions of this ordinance shall be notified by the city forester, da-da-da-da-da, and must be taken, and action that must be taken into compliance. If the compliance persists, penalties may be imposed for each day the violation is provided by the city code 1 through 18. So, we are going to slap them pretty hard. So I've got an oak wilt tree, balls in my yard, and I just, I cut it up and I stack it in the, in the corner. And Tom comes out and says, you got to move that. You can't, you can't store it there.
He won't be able to enforce that as an ordinance violation. If the ordinance says it's recommended-
Because it's just recommended.
Um, you're not going to be able to write a citation to enforce that.
So why do we have it?
Well, you could have it in a policy, I think they're trying to educate people.
Well, no, I'm just trying, yes.
But they, that was my question, how would you enforce, you don't enforce?
We've had people that have just started cutting trees down in public space that we've seen recently, that's, that's a problem.
Yeah, it is.
Tom has an example if he wants to share that one or not, but you just show up and the tree's gone, well, that's in public right of way, so can we enforce a violation on that?
I would think discretion of public property, yes.
On that note-
We're not talking about private property here.
Public property. If you have somebody that cuts a tree down on city property.
Yeah, this violation is for public property violations, that's the way I read it, if you want to say public property.
Which one are you talking about now? Yeah.
The other ones, since we're only recommending the other things, there's no enforcement on the, your oak wilt wood, we would just say, well, you know, it's up to you, but you could be spreading oak wilt, so.
I know. I know.
Like.
It says private, private property, tree vegetation regulations. And then it continues on and then it goes to section, I'm just reading.
Well, for example, 229-14A, the reason that is, that's a tree that's interfering with light from a street light or visibility or traffic control, so that is enforceable. That's a matter of public safety.
Correct.
Even though the tree is on private property, it's encroaching into public area.
I think we're moving in the right, we're close here.
So shouldn't it be, shouldn't if what Mayor is saying, shouldn't 229-16 actually maybe go under 229-13 and make it G?
Huh?
Well, I think if we want to start rewriting and reorganizing, we should do a first reading and come back, but.
Well, yeah, I know, I know. I'm going to make a motion for a first reading, but with the suggestion would be if, because it doesn't say, either that or we have to say public property in the violation.
No, because there's violations under 229-14 on private property. The point is a recommendation under 229-14, if it's written as a recommendation, there's no violation if you don't follow it. You're not, there's not a requirement, you're being told to comply with.
Correct.
You're being asked to comply with it, but.
But you don't have to.
You aren't going to be written a citation.
I understand that, but it's not clear that this is public, a public property violation.
There can be a private property violation. If you have a tree that's blocking the visibility of, we've seen it on Ninth Street, you know, you can't see, you know, control, traffic control, street light, all that, that's that's a violation, you have to come into compliance.
Sure.
So there's violations that are in more sections than just 229-13.
And there's other ordinances that talk about that obstruction, so.
Okay. Well, I'll move for a first reading.
I'll second.
More discussion. Anything that.
I think, you know, 229-14, the private property tree and vegetation regulations reads pretty stiff. I mean, there's not, there's no room for recommendation in there. I don't see the word at all. It says will be notified, you know, it's.
We're moving the one. Yeah, we're changing that language.
In 14, the whole thing? B.
E and F from 13 are moving to 14.
In 13, but how about 14 is what Jim was talking about.
Right. E and F from 13 are being moved to 14 and the it's going to say recommend instead of shall.
Recommend that no person, I think.
Are you saying you have a problem with A, B, or C?
Yeah, like, you know, at B is is pretty stiff. Read all, almost all those have some pretty stiff wording in there that and then E and F come in and kind of go soft and not, it's not congruent.
Just so we're, just so we're clear, it's going to be, the city recommends for both of those, E and F.
That's right.
And they've moved from 13 to 14.
In the case of B, if you have a tree that has Emerald Ash Bor on your property.
We want to be able.
We're going to come and take it. Or you have to, because it's, it could ruin or damage tons or many, many, many trees.
25%.
Yeah.
Okay.
We are, we want to enforce that. And so kind of like with the Dutch elm thing, we're just saying, hey, if some people might not know it, maybe they don't want to cut the tree down, but we're saying as a part of enforcement and probably quarantine that we're going to need to be able to do that, so. And it's enforceable.
And you're not going to allow the the property owner to keep the wood if it's infested?
I believe you can burn ash.
You can. The problem becomes a matter of transporting it into uninfested areas and so what John mentioned about the state and the U.S. Department of Agriculture quarantining St. Croix County, they come in and help us monitor, but the movement of what is 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 and the recommendation is really that it not be moved while the Emerald Ash Bor adult can fly, fly away, you know, fly out of the wood. So it's again, another example of some public education that the Urban Forestry Board is going to be challenged with and so that we can, you know.
What I don't want to stifle though is the the opportunity for homeowner to burn their own wood from their own tree that just got.
That's right.
Provided you guys are going to provide a guideline within this ordinance to store it.
That's right, absolutely. Yep, we're working on, that's one of our next action items to create the, to write the guidelines for storage, so that everyone just knows how to do it.
Because as Tom pointed out about trimming the trees and after May 1st, April 1st, shouldn't do that.
Right.
With oak trees.
With oak trees.
Yeah, oak will can kill a lot of oak trees pretty fast.
Yep.
Unfortunately.
And you can learn that at our Arbor Day celebration.
That's right, this Saturday.
On Saturday, but we got that later on, but.
Okay, so we have a motion for the first reading, right? So basically, those changes would be made and come back and we can suggest.
There any other changes, yeah.
Yeah, if there's any other, yes. So if you have changes now.
Or concerns that you have about any part of this. Will you have the guidelines included with this or is that going to be?
Yeah, we have several things on the website that are part of the advanced, our advanced tree.
Would Bernie whether that would be ready for the next item?
Yeah, how to store it, whatever's tied to this ordinance, I want to see the documentation.
Okay, sure. Yeah, we'll get to work on that.
Thank you, you guys for doing the, this is not, it's not an easy deal.
No, it's pretty kind of painful.
Every time we look at it, we got to go, oh, let's go backwards and listen.
I think these guys have worked hard, you guys have had great input, I think it's really going to help us do a really good job managing our forests, so.
And the next item obviously will also be postponed because they're tied together, E and F.
Make one more comment. One of the, one of the things that happens when a private party has a tree taken down, they usually remove and frequently remove all the wood is part of the process, because I can't burn wood anymore. So if I have a tree taken down, they're going to haul it away. How does, how do they come, come, come into compliance with this? St. Croix Tree Service, for example, is their.
It is another matter of the tree services and they're well aware of the regulations that are imposed once a insect like Emerald Ash Bor is found, so they're not going to be the ones that move a pest like that around and so they will comply just out of a good sense of good business to not moving that and exacerbating the problem. I mean, it's a matter, that's why we're softening this, we don't have the people to to monitor and enforce a stricter ordinance, so.
So if it can't be moved and he lives in an area where he can't burn it, where does it go?
It's going to go somewhere here in St. Croix County. It would have to.
Have to keep it here.
Once the quarantine would be going to effect, we wouldn't be able to take it out of the county, so we'll have to have, you know how we had the place up at?
Yeah.
It's going to, we're going to need something like that to utilize it. We could chip it, you could, what is it, the one inch?
Right, one inch and two dimensions renders it unable to harbor the Emerald Ash Bor. But the the whole point is, you know, we need to be prepared to handle a large amount of debris like the storm created in the site up by the industrial park, but hopefully all our preventative measures and education ahead of time will spread not only the cost but the work and the volume of infested wood that we're going to have to handle. So the city will have a site that people can bring the wood and have it processed in. Typically, you get a supply of wood and one of the tree services that has a large tub grinder that can chip it to this particular size, comes in with the equipment and chips it up, so.
So if you chip it, is it usable?
Yes.
Yes.
So the city could chip it and give it back to residents?
That's correct.
We could, there you go.
So Ken, do you think it's inevitable that we're going to get it? It's just a matter of time?
I'll tell you, I I bring good news and I work for DNR next door in Minnesota and that, not only the early detection, many of the people here have taken the first detector training over in Minnesota and Wisconsin is developing the same program, but with the file control agents, the little WASPs that are not, that are stingless, a whole variety of things, we're going to be instituting, keep those, the habitat for woodpeckers going there, don't, don't take those snacks down, because they point us to those larvae and under the bark and the early detection, the changing, the mixing up of the tree canopy, the different species of trees, the gravel bed, if you come to Arbor Day, the gravel bed system is going to make reforestation, it's going to cut the price in half and we're going to have, be well ahead of the game and prepared. So to answer your question, Mayor, I'm very optimistic that we will be well ahead of the game.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the option be looked at if if we're in cases like, like gyms, that the city would be able to chip it and offer it as a service to residents to have or use it themselves in their parks or what have you.
We have as part of the, our tree board charter now, utilization, which is either chipping or burning or there's people that mill it, that it's part of our plan to try to facilitate some of that coming down the pike already, but having the support of the, obviously, the city to have a place to do it is kind of, and I don't know if.
That is not city property, that belongs to the industrial.
Business park.
I'm talking about what is, what's up in North Hudson, what is that facility?
The old landfill?
Yeah, the old landfill. There's a ton, yeah. So we could utilize space like that and as part of our program for not only education, but we could start treating our trees against Emerald Ash Bor, which we have a small budget for that, to do the the prominent trees downtown, but private citizens could do that as well. And if you come to Arbor Day, you could learn more about that.
Which happens to be Wednesday.
Saturday.
Saturday at nine.
Saturday at nine, nine to noon.
West Garage?
Yeah, West Garage.
Okay, we have a motion, thank you, Ken. We have a motion on the floor in a second for first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So 10 we're going to wait on, correct?
10, yes.
10, yeah. NG, discussion and possible action on bids received for 2014 street maintenance seal coating.
At the last meeting, you had asked, you postponed action until we received some type of, you know, a letter or something, a new letter guaranteeing that they were going to take care of the issues on Laurel. Tom's been working with them, but he has not received that letter yet. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, they were going to, they wanted to come out and they being the people above our contact wanted to come out and look at it. Is that correct, Tom?
Well, again, the reason I, it was supposed to come off and I put it back on the agenda because I don't want to stop our, I mean, we never had a vote on it, I think it was a.
It was postponed.
It was postponed and I just don't want to get behind the eight ball on our street maintenance. Again, we get, if we delay until a certain time, you know, if we're uncomfortable with the company, the letter that they had was pretty specific that they're going to fix the problem and we've had them do work for us since that time, haven't we? Farnor?
Yes.
And have you had any problems with them?
Uh, no.
Since, since that one project that we did, but we have had other projects with street sealing that they've, they've done for us that there has.
They did crack filling and flex patching last year, yes.
Yeah, so I guess my point to the council is, remember we always talk about we never get stuff done on a timely manner? Well, if we delay it again, we may, I don't know when we're going to get on the schedule, but Tom, go ahead, I just, I wanted everybody.
Did everyone see the last letter or the letter that I received last year?
I believe I saw it, we did that to the council.
Looking at it right now.
So we did have this letter on file, they did agree that the project would be completed no later than July 15th. After the last council meeting, I did contact John Mason, who's basically my contact or the Farnor's contact to the city, and discussed the issues that we had at the last meeting, stating that we would like a maybe another letter agreement that would specify the area a little closer, the exact procedure that they're going to follow. And if this process was not completed by, in a timely fashion, that it would be deducted, deducted and the approximate cost for the repairs would be deducted from the 2014 seal code agreement. He's, John Farnor's, or John Mason said at that time that he would speak with his superiors and I was contacted last Thursday afternoon that they would actually like to come in and revisit the area before they had signed a, send a letter out like that, but I think they were.
So what do you think that means, Tom? They don't want to do it or?
No, they would like to just revisit it with, but they said in this letter here that they would, they would get it taken care of, so.
So we had two bids, if I remember right, and does anybody remember what they were?
Yep, I've got it up here from last meeting. The Farnor was with the alternate was 168, 491. Scott's construction was 264, 299.
I'm making a motion to, to move forward with Farnor. Based.
Can we do that if it's not on the agenda?
Didn't you?
Isn't it on the agenda?
It's on the agenda, the documentation was not.
Construction and possible action, yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion to move forward with Farnor and just have Tom continue to follow up with the process of them evaluating Laurel.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Discussion now. I don't know, I just, I just don't want to get put on the back burner again and we don't, go ahead.
My suggestion was, I knew we had this letter, I didn't know it at the last council meeting.
I didn't either.
And I wondered why it was put out that long, but I think it was a function of weather, but I thought it would be better, but you asked for an enforceable agreement.
Yep.
So I suggested that let's have them agree in writing that get estimates on the amount and if it's not done by that deadline, which is the deadline they said they could complete it by, the city would withhold that amount from their 2014 contract. I thought it just puts a little bit more, look, here's, and the city could use that to complete the project.
And I think we can still do that.
I thought the council wanted something more than just their promise, you know, their letter that's saying they would do that.
How much do you think that project will cost if you, if we had to go out and rebid that project, the area that's affected? Probably under $10,000. So we have a, we have two bids, one for 100.
169 and.
Versus two.
It's almost $100,000 more.
Right, yes.
It's not worth it to wait.
It's not, in my opinion, it's not worth it, it has a business decision to wait for 10,000. I believe that if they don't do this, they are, they've got a real problem with us and.
We have a, we have a sizable amount of money for projects, for projects this year for crack filling and flex patching. I think they would probably think that, looking at the amount of money that we're going to do for other projects as fall that.
And quite frankly, I, if they don't come out and do it, I wouldn't pay them the 10 or whatever, even though we have a contract on the, well, they sent us a letter saying they're going to fix it. And if they don't do it by July 30, whenever they said.
15, yeah.
That I would say we're going to withhold the money and get it done.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
I mean, I don't know, you know, we talked about it last time and I, I just thought, why do we want to risk a bid of saving, almost not saving, but.
96,000.
$96,000 and I'm not saying we're risking it, because we have 60 days, was it, accept the bid?
Yes.
But we're coming up, we've got.
April 2nd is when they were.
So we have until May, but June.
June 2nd.
But I'd like to get on the schedule, get it done, so that we don't wait till September to do it.
Yeah, because it won't get done till August if we wait till the end of May.
Well, I don't know, anybody else have any thoughts on it? Randy or John or Jim?
So you, are we going to separate the two issues? Is that basically what we're going to?
Yeah.
Move ahead with this and then move ahead with the enforceable.
Yes.
Contract as a separate issue?
Yeah, I mean, we still have a letter saying they're going to do.
Yeah, they've put in writing that they'll do it, I just wanted to have.
And I think Lori, Lori was concerned that they had done a rotten job on that and I think it was over in that district.
Sure, the street, but I think it's kind of a cop out for them to say they'll come reevaluate it, they already admitted they'd redo it, but that's why I'm saying that Tom continue forward.
This letter says they're going to do it.
Yep.
So that's why it's saying to reevaluate it to me is a delay game, so I'm not going to play their delay game and we're going to move forward and have it taken care of.
Well, and if they're already going to be here in town, then they can just take care of it as part of another job.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, I think as we look for payment, Neil, on this, if we don't have that, that, that spot done, and I don't know if that's a good number or not, maybe we won't, maybe it's 158 that we pay them instead of the 168, so we can get the other part and then we'll, well, how do you, because we, we hold back a contingency, don't we? Don't we do?
Well, with respect to the project that is the subject of the contract.
I know that. But, but you know, we, we write the checks. I know she doesn't like that, but you know.
Well, why don't, why don't we get an update on July, whatever, the first meeting in July and then we'll know, then we can make.
They're going to be out here soon anyway, aren't they? I mean, they want to do business, we want to do business with them and they want to do business with us, I think.
I don't think we need to justify it, I think you're right and I think we, let's just get going on this.
Anybody have any other thoughts? We'll have a vote on it if, questions, comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, new business. I, I kind of skipped over that. Discussion and possible action on resolution five dash fourteen, preliminary resolution, declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under section sixty-six oh seven oh three, Wisconsin statute.
We're required, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We're required to do this every year before we can actually issue any special assessments for any of the projects. So, this is standard that we do every year prior to the summer roadwork.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Roll call? Or is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Weber?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Okay, discussion on this. Um, I think this is our, this has been our standard agreement, um, that we've had for.
What'll happen next is then, as the project is defined and the information on special assessments becomes available, the property owners will be notified. There'll be a special assessment hearing at some point down the road, and then the public will have the opportunity. But we have to make this declaration first, so.
What's the timeline?
When is, when other bid openings, Karen?
Right now, it looks like the bid opening will be practically June twelfth.
So, usually then we would, the, the following council meeting, then?
The June sixteenth council meeting would be the public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
I move to approve resolution number five dash fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, just as a comment, this is one of the parts of our, uh, city, uh, resolution, or city code, code, or how enforcement or preliminary, uh, spe- uh, special assessment powers, I think we need to review. Hasn't been reviewed in.
Our special assessment policy.
Yes. How many years? Danny, do you remember?
I've been here thirteen, and it hasn't been done since I've been here, other than adjusting the time.
And I think Mr. Sifko is here, and I think that would be.
I thought we reviewed it when, when we had the sidewalk issue over on.
Well, we, we changed the amount of time given to people to pay, but we haven't looked at what they pay for, and what they don't pay for, and.
I think we are very, at this point, if we compare some of the other municipalities, we're very generous. But I think that's something we, this council needs to address also, whether or not we wanna change that.
Would you like Public Works to look at that?
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
Anyway, that's kinda off the track a little bit, but, um, any other discussions on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think that's all we have on, uh, recommendations from the mayor, uh, April twenty-fifth, nine o'clock.
April twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, geez, I get it wrong. Saturday, at the West Garage on, just off Second Street.
I, I would like to just follow up by saying, uh, Arbor Day this year is gonna be a lot different, because we, uh, with the grant money we received from, uh, Wisconsin DNR, we are building a gravel, what's called gravel bed nursery, or gravel bed system, and you plant sixty to seventy trees in a thirty by, ten by thirty bed space. And the trees, the roots grow very fast, and in the fall, you pull them back out, and we plant them around the city in places where we've lost trees, or there's trees that can be planted. We continue to, uh, reforest, and we do it at a fraction of the cost. Um.
And CSAS is really good, isn't it?
It's been fantastic. And so, we're one of the first cities, not only in Wisconsin, but also Minnesota that's doing it. It's one of the reasons we got the grant. So, it's gonna be pretty neat. Uh, so you can help plant with that. You can learn more about emerald ashbore. We've got pruning. So, from nine to twelve, it's supposed to be sunny, but cool. Um, uh, I think at the West Garage, it's, it's gonna be, uh, one of our better Arbor Days, so come on out. It's gonna be awesome.
It's gonna rain.
No, it's not. Forecast is forty-nine and sunny.
It's gonna rain, just like the.
It's not gonna rain.
The carnival and.
Last year was sixty-five degrees and sunny.
Okay, communication for future agenda items, council members, anybody else?
I.
Yes, sir.
I, I know we had asks that have, uh, stop markings up by the intersection of, was the new, the new street Badger and, uh, Crestview. Karen, I believe we asked, or Tom, to have stop markings by the stoplights, the new stoplights. So, they're not there yet. It's getting, there needs to be some markings put down. I'm, I'm.
That's why the conditions of approval of the subdivision, they have to provide for that. I, I think they got in too cold weather, too late last year. Yeah, we'd like to get them out there, get that painted as soon as possible.
Yeah. And then just an overall, uh, look at our painting stripes in the city. Some of them are really worn.
Okay.
Or have Public Works do it, and.
We need a date for a special meeting, too, if we can.
Oh, that's right. I have one other thing, a special meeting for the Booster, or for the, uh, softball association, uh, April twenty.
After April twenty-fourth.
After April twenty-fourth, but April twenty-fifth, we did, couldn't get a court. Was there anyone here that can make that meeting, the twenty-fifth? I know Mary couldn't.
I can make it.
I can.
Two? Tom?
I have no idea.
Is it something that we're even looking at, if the contract does not?
Well, I think, I think, uh, yeah, I think it is.